Good evening and welcome to the April 22nd, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to talk to council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council. As you can see, we have a light system. It's three minutes. After setting your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes and a beep, you will see a red light. At that time, we ask that you please take your seat. Written remarks may also be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. Our city code identifies participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to City Council. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of our meeting, Pastor Andrew Whitehead with Haydenwood Presbyterian Church provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Harris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome or under no obligation to do so. Thank you. Friends, please join me in a word of prayer. O Lord, what a blessing it is to be able to gather in this place on a beautiful spring evening such as this, to open our hearts and minds to you and to one another. So as we begin this meeting, allow us to take a moment to express our gratitude for the many blessings that have brought us here. We give you thanks, O Lord, for all the people gathered here today, for those who have come to advocate for the needs of their neighbors, especially those whose voices are so often unheard or ignored. We give you thanks for those who have answered the call to leadership with all the burdens and stress that such responsibility inevitably brings. We give you thanks for those who are here simply because they love this city and wish to see it and all who dwell in it thrive. As this body goes to work this evening, we ask that you would be present here among us, blessing us with the gifts we need to make this a fruitful time together. Grant us the conviction to speak our truth with honesty and clarity. Grant us the humility to listen attentively and respectfully as others seek to do the same, especially when they may see things differently than we do. Grant us the courage to be curious in the face of difficult questions or decisions, especially those that may stir up anxiety or fear within us. And grant us gratitude as we remember that we are wiser together than we are apart and that you are present here with us today as we seek the common good of this city that we all call home. Lord bless the work done here this evening. Bless all those who have gathered here tonight and bless the city of Newport News. Amen.
Please join me as we recite the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one presentation this evening. At this time, will Laura Carlson, Chair for Virginia Peninsula Realtors, Jim Wetzel, CEO of Virginia Peninsula Realtors, Javon Miles, BPR President-elect, join me at the podium. Thank you. And then could I have Councilman Long and Vic? So we have a nice proclamation. I'm going to read the proclamation. So whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined in federal law the goal of eliminating segregation, ending discrimination in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, status, national origin, and disability, and whereas the city of Newport News is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, many communities remain segregated, a lot of these, and whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal opportunity are repugnant to a sense of decency and fairness, now therefore I, Philip Jones, and our members of City Council as well, hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month. All right, let's do the photo. Let's take this this way. Public hearings, page four, Item E1, Request Adopt An Ordinance Authorizing Change Of Zoning, Charlie Zulu dash 2025 dash 0001 to EDA of the city of Newport News and D.R. Horton from R9 Mixed Youth With Proffers and P1 Park to R9 Mixed Use With New Proffers Overlay For A 282.3351 Acre Parcel Located At 350 Yorktown Road. At this time, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir.
I see that we do. Grady Palmer?
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be in Newport News tonight. My address, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. We've been working on this project that we know is Parkside Inview for about four years now. For all of those listening, for your information, this project's obviously owned by the Economic Development Authority. They put out a request for interest in the project and we were awarded the developer for the Inview project. And so we have been working for the last couple of years in what you see today, which is a very well-designed, mixed housing, pedestrian-connected proposal for the Inview property owned by the EDA. And I'm going to, I know the time is quick, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the proffers. The D.R. Horton team is here to talk about the project more in detail, but I just want the council and the public to know there are a number of proffers. The property is currently zoned for, I think, about 1,200 units. What we are proposing in the proffers is to not exceed 620 residential units, and there's a mix of units that will appeal to all price points. The additional proffer that we have included is significant traffic improvements. In particular, I know Crawford Road was a source of concern, so the project will have an entrance on Crawford Road, but it will be limited to an emergency access only, so there will not be a free-flow vehicular traffic from the project to Crawford Road. One other important proffer that we have included in the list here is a memorandum of understanding between a number of governmental agencies to preserve and protect historic resources on the property. And so there's a series of signage, of reporting, and obligations that the developer will be, will have for the life of the project that will help preserve, protect, and promote the historical awareness of Inview. And so, yeah, it's, in my view, a fantastic project, emphasizes homeownership opportunities in the city of Newport News. And we apropos that this is Fair Housing Month. To have fair housing, you have to have housing. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Newport News, and I want to thank you, I do ask for your support tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Request for the floor.
Yep.
Sir, in regards to the proffers, I thought that there was an addition to potential street lights or some kind of, can you speak to that very briefly?
Yes, sorry, yes, I will. So we have a traffic impact analysis that's been conducted, and the proffers actually lay out all the individual improvements that we will perform at our expense. So one of those improvements is, at a certain point in the development, we will do an analysis of all the existing traffic signals that are up, and we will provide that analysis to the city, and I can go through the list of signal analysis that we'll do, but we will do signal analysis of all of these signals, give that to the city, and in the event that it's warranted, then we will perform any improvements that are needed for those signals to work and traffic to move through the intersections. So that is proffered.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Vic?
Can you expand or clarify a little bit? You mentioned something about the emergency parking being in a specified area. Can you?
Yes, so, I don't know, do we have a?
Exits, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if we have a, I don't know if we have a site plan, we have a site plan. So there are three entrances for the project. So one of those entrances will be on Crawford Road. That entrance will be limited to an emergency gated ingress/egress only, so there will not, there will not be free-flow traffic, there will only be emergency vehicles that will come through the entrance on Crawford Road.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. And the widening of the lanes from two lanes to four lanes, is that something that was?
Is that, you're talking about Crawford Road?
No.
Yorktown?
Yorktown Road.
I think planning.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not, that's not a private developer-funded project, correct?
Well, to that point, can Plan speak to that very briefly? We just want to make sure that the community is aware of the widening.
It's proposed, they're dedicating land for it, but they're not building it.
Say the last part, you'll have to.
Yorktown Road, they will be dedicating land for it in front of their property, but they're not building it.
Okay.
So we're going to go back to the public hearing part, and then we can ask more questions during the time for council deliberation. Mr. Bryan Rowe?
Good evening, Mayor Jones.
Good evening.
Members of council. I'm Brian Rowe. I reside at 803 Cypress Chapel Road in Suffolk, Virginia, and great to be before you this evening. I'm going to, Grady did a great job of explaining everything, and there'll probably be questions later, so I'm going to be standing by for questions. I know we have all individually and corporately spoken about this project in much detail, so any questions for me, I'll be glad to deal with those as they come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa Venable, and then Manuel Ancram.
I can stand by.
Okay, no, you're good for questions. Tracking. Manuel Ancram?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of council.
Good evening.
I have some primary concerns. First of all, let me explain that I live at 548 Yorktown Road. I'm approximately less than a half a mile from the entrance of Inview Plantation. I've lived there since 1977. I have witnessed a school bus accidents at Crawford Road and Yorktown Road. There are numerous tour buses, numerous tours throughout the area. The project sounds decent, but what it's going to do, it's going to bottleneck and create a congestion for all the people from out of state to come to visit Yorktown. Colonial Parkway is closed, it has been closed, and it's going to be a while before it opens up. Some of the other concerns I have, it's not so much about the project as that I'm really concerned that, is this a good time to make this move? And from the government at the very top down to the city leaders here right now, it's hire, fire, dismiss, reduce this, and the employment rate, and what we're going to be doing to the military and stuff like that. And now with the tariff act going on, if this lasts three or four years, you know, how long are we going to have to go through the process of living on Yorktown Road, having a development, being developed? And right now, this past week, I've had better than 12 tour buses pass my door. I'm retired and I'm home, and I know what I'm talking about. Traffic is extremely heavy. I have come from a hospital or doctor appointment in Richmond, down, yesterday, down 64, where I got off at the Naval Weapons Station, the traffic to turn to Yorktown Road started to back up almost at the sewer treatment plant right there, and it really is terrible. I-64 from there to Jefferson Avenue is probably two tenths of a mile, and there is some serious issues. The other thing I will say in closing is that the information about this project, I never heard about it for a long time, and then the last one we had down here, I asked about the information. I never had any written information about this project, and I value to say that many of my fellow citizens up there in Yorktown, or not Yorktown Road, we never got this stuff. We never got to see what this looked like. Some of the information is dated in '22, so I think we should take time to take a closer look at this project and make sure we cross Ts and dot Is, because the decision you make affects everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Now's the time to ask any questions, if there was any extra questions. Okay, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 98, Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment, Zulu Tango dash 2025 dash 0001, amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter 45, zoning ordinance, modifications and adjustments of district regulations to modify Section 45 dash 2808, special building setbacks along expressways and collector streets. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
I see that there are none. Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jones?
Mayor Jones? Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
And Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 112, Item E3, Request Adopt An Ordinance Authorizing The Vacation Of An Existing 18,000 Square Feet Right-of-Way Located Down On 38th Street Between Warwick Boulevard And CSX. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent Agenda. Item F contains the following items, page 117, minutes of the work session of April 8th, page 154, minutes of the regular meeting, April 8th, page 175, minutes of the continued budget hearing on April 10th, motion to approve the consent agenda, item F1 through F3, all conclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions, page 185, Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute documents for a project administration agreement between the city of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for the citywide retro reflective backplate and flashing yellow arrows project. This project is funded by the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant and includes the installation of high-visibility signal backplates at 183 intersections and flashing yellow arrows at 12 intersections. I recommend approval.
At this time, I see we have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 198, Item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $4,274,000 in fiscal year 2025 Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds for the citywide retro reflective backplate and flashing yellow arrows project. I recommend approval.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 202, Item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution granting permission to use the city's right of way for telecommunications purposes and authorizing a temporary, non-exclusive revocable license agreement between the city of Newport News and Wavelength Technologies Incorporated. The existing agreement approved in 2015 is set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Wavelength has requested a renewal for an additional five years to maintain telecommunications links for Huntington Ingalls Industries' private network. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Councilwoman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Appropriations, page 227, Item H, Mr. Manager.
There are four appropriations this evening. Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating grant funds designed to support the ongoing Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Initiative and the work of the I Team. The city of Newport News was selected as one of 25 cities to participate in the program, a three-year initiative focused on building cleaner, more resilient, and economically thriving communities. BASK is providing each participating locality with $120,000 in grant funding distributed in $260,000 allocations over the course of a three-year initiative. Item H2 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $456,471 for dock improvements at the northern end of the seafood industrial park. Project involves dredging, removal of deteriorated piers, installation of two new moorings, a construction of an ADA-compliant floating dock to support the upcoming retail seafood market under the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. Item H3 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $3,500,000 from the fiscal year 2025 bond authorization, community development category of support, in support of maritime economic development projects. The project includes dredging, demolition of deteriorated piers, installation of new moorings, and construction of an ADA-compliant floating dock to serve the future retail seafood market under the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. Both items H2 and H3 will be used to support efforts around that scope of work. And finally, H4. H4 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $8,150,000 in community development funding from the fiscal year 2024 bond authorization to support continued implementation of the Transformation Plan for the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood and the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Implementation Grant. This appropriation will fund critical community improvements, including gateway enhancements, a health and wellness trail, residential facade improvements, and the rehabilitation of 2510 Jefferson Avenue. A portion of the funds will also go toward construction of the seafood market at the northern end of the seafood industrial park, and I recommend approval of all the appropriations.
Are there any speakers? I see we have one, Ms. Uganda Sample Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so my name is Uganda Sample Jones, and I'm here today to ask your support for appropriating funds to the very important efforts in our community, the seafood market, the work around it, and the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. So I've been proud to serve as part of this initiative and work along beside incredible people like Mr. Lamont and Simone Williams, who are opening a business in the East Stand called the East Stand Cafe. For the past nine years, we have worked closely with our city managers. For the past nine years, we have worked closely with our city managers department, planning, economic development, and the housing authority to bring this project to fruition. I've seen this work grow from early in our community to having the meetings, to real progress and changing lives. Today, I serve as the chair of this initiative, and I am committed to taking this further, building sustainable, building a sustainable organization that will serve not only today's families but generations to come. So the seafood market is a critical piece of our community's future. It is just not about the fresh food. It's about the jobs. It's about the economic growth and preserving this part of our culture. The Choice Neighborhood Initiative continues to bridge in connecting families to stable housing, safer neighborhoods, and better opportunities. So with your support, we can keep this momentum going. I'd like to thank you for everything that you have done thus far for the Choice Neighborhood Initiative and your continued investment in our city's future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve items H1 through H4?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just say, all things Bloomberg, just appreciate the entire team and the innovation. I know a lot of work has gone into that, something that we normally do in Newport News, but to be select the top 25 cities, it means a lot. So a lot of hard work there. Thanks to the staff. At this time, if there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Item I, citizen comments on matters germane to council. I will call each name in the order appears in front of me. Carrie Epps? Carrie Epps, maybe? Yep.
Epps. It's Epps.
Yeah.
Fred Anthony Fasella, first.
Okay. Oh, no worries. Anthony can come first then. How about that?
Thank you. Happy Earth Day.
Happy birthday.
Happy Earth Day to you, too.
If you'd like to send a Earth Day card to our planet, you could sign the city's appeal for the treaty for the prohibition of nuclear weapons. As an active member of Earth Bond U, I regularly pick up trash in our city. We have an adoptive spot on Warwick Boulevard. Recently, I passed by a location that was not our spot, and I spent about an hour picking up this much plastic trash from Mariners Lake. Clearly, the city is not doing that, and neither are citizens. Someone has to. I know that some of you still drink out of plastic bottles, even though you know you get twice as much microplastics in your water when you do that. But I get it. We're addicted. Companies that are addicted to profit get us addicted to plastic, and it's all around us. It's in our bodies. It's in our air. It's in our water. It's killing us. If you eat food, take out from a restaurant in a plastic container, you increase your risk of heart failure. Can you imagine what that is doing to animals that are eating the container? By 2030, the biggest soft drink company in the world is expected to emit more than 1.3 billion pounds of plastic into the ocean per year. And what does it do to us? A recent study indicated that we can have as much as 0.5% of our brain consisting of plastic, because that's where it concentrates in our body the most. That's enough to make a small plastic spoon. And if you put your heads together, you could maybe get a plastic bottle that you drank out of earlier today. The federal government, 2017 to 2020 revoked more than 100 environmental regulations, and the federal government today is working to revoke bans on forever chemicals, PFAS plastics. What are we going to do about it? This is not a favor for me. This is about us. This is about your bodies, all of our bodies. How do we fix it? If love without wisdom is the root of suffering, then plastic in your brain could be worth discovering. Regardless of president, climate, or weather, we all share a problem. Let's fix this together. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Carrie Epps?
All right. Happy Earth Day to you, mayor and members of the city council.
Good evening.
As my friend Anthony Fasella has spoken so elegantly about, I'm here to discuss plastic waste. We have sent an email to each one of you today with a survey that is designed to kind of gauge where you all stand on it, what areas of interest you might have, what avenues of solution you might be interested in pursuing, and we can kind of work from there. Some of these proposals include a city campaign to draw attention to it, more trash bins throughout the area, so citizens have more available spaces to dispose of it properly rather than just chucking it. We can hire more city workers for cleanup, impose microtacs on single-use plastics, ban single-use plastics. There's actually a couple grad students from Princeton have devised a filter system that is proving very effective at removing microplastics from water supply. It's in practice right now in the city of Atlantic City, New Jersey, and they're meeting with some really positive results there, and that would be worth looking into. Otherwise, I, as a citizen myself, would be more than glad to work with the city to help organize regular deep cleanups of areas near and around waterways, parking lots, roadways, basically anywhere in the city, because this plastic, as it breaks down, it gets into our water, and we are surrounded by water, so our waste becomes the world's waste. I'd be more than glad to work with the city in organizing these cleanups and hope that the city could provide resources to help in that field as well. Let's see. There would be sorting through roadside pickups, such as the compost, leaf pickup and all. We found that a lot of plastic waste gets into the compost that the city sells or uses throughout, already broken down in pretty much a micro form. So if there's some way to sort through that before actually turning it back out as compost, that would be a very crucial way of removing a lot of these small plastics that are everywhere. So the federal government's completely abandoned us on this. So now, more than ever, I think it's crucial that we act as citizens, as communities, as local governments, as a state government. We need to do everything we can. It's a very crucial, a very dire point that we have to address here. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Juan Banner? And then George Etter?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And all the council members.
Good evening.
Again, I want to talk about the subject of sexual harassment. It's being used as a weapon. When the Rico came down for the rapper Sean Cones, there was a lady involved. Her name was Daphne Joy, who happened to have a baby by the rapper 50 Cent. She was accused, she might be a sex worker. I remember looking on YouTube. He was like, oh, if you know 50 Cent, he like doing social media and stuff. So, a little sex worker. I'm gonna get my child. Her answer was, he are me. About a couple of months ago, I believe, in the state of Georgia, a young woman called the police, I think they called it a SWAT incident. The police came there, said there's a girl being beat. The police came there. One of the guys jumped over the fence, bled out. She knew she was in trouble. So what she do? She went to social media, started explaining why she did it. She was saying that she had been beat on, which is probably true, and all that domestic violence and stuff. But the thing that stuck out to me, every sentence, every sentence that she spoke, she either started or put in the middle or ended the sentence with the statement, because y'all know I'm a woman. Then we're not gonna talk about, I can bring up this stuff about Santa Shop. But one thing I know on the job, just because your title says Vice President of Operations or whatever, that doesn't give you knowledge of this. Now, I've been here speaking for the last month or so. I know I'm gonna be all right. I'm speaking for those people that's on the job that this might have happened to, and they can't speak. And once again, I want to ask you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, what legal power that you can use to talk to this company? Because that's your campaign right there. When 9/11 hit, and my condolences to the people that lost their lives, and if it affected anyone in here, the honorable Rudy Giuliani, he became America's mayor. The voters will remember this. This will get you the governor's chair. And dare I say, the big chair. I'm gonna continue this fight. I'm gonna start bringing in signatures and stuff like that. I would thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
George Etter, and then Jeffrey Williams.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
My concern is about the in-view development plan. My hope is that you all take a very in-depth look at the proposal. The accommodating additional homes and houses there is probably very vital for the city's development. I don't have a problem with that. But the major issue that I'm wanting to speak on is the fact of the design of that traffic in and out of that development proposals plan. It's like a maze. The other element I'm concerned with is having businesses at the corner of Yorktown and Jefferson. I oppose that part of the project. That development, that they put those townhouses or apartments there, should be moved into the interior and allow that open space to remain as it is. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, sir.
And I hope to meet with you all individually at some point to get a clarification or better understanding as to how I feel about it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jeffrey Williams, then Kristi Williams, then William Brenton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, members of council?
Good evening.
My name is Jeffrey Williams. I live at 15 Denby Boulevard. For those that are not familiar, that is down where the whole dock thing restoration is happening. First, I want to say thank you for repaving everything. Denby Motor Speedway looks great down there, where we continue to have people racing up and down and drag racing. I continue to pick up animals off the side of the road that should be protected by the state park rather than being killed by the state park. And the word is getting out. Other cities are coming down. As late as Easter Sunday, we had a gentleman that lives in Carrollton that decided to leave the state park drunk and hit the sign in front of our house while my wife was standing 200 feet away. You know, nothing like a little PTSD from her getting struck by a vehicle, being a pedestrian walking down the street. I know things take time. We've already had the approval for the speed bumps. We already know what speed bumps or bumps are going in, where they're going. We did the whole repaving thing. I'm not gonna sit here and pretend I know, you know, the logistics of that, even though I did logistics for 24 years in the military. The covert that's still not stopping water from the check valve that was put in a couple years ago and is now deteriorating the road that the city noticed when they were paving it, so they filled the little sinkhole in with rocks and is now creating a new sinkhole next to it. So hopefully that road doesn't fall apart while somebody's driving over it. We've showed the city many a times that the water is going around that covert, so that would have been a perfect time to dig that thing up and repair it when we repaved the road. But we paved it, so we'll dig it up and pave it again. What else? That's pretty much it. I'm just, there's gotta be a better timeline for this. I mean, like I said, I'm really tired of picking up animals off the side of the road, accidents happening in front of our house. Even the officer that responded to the drunk driver from Carrollton, as he's sitting there talking to us, a gentleman's riding his bicycle past us, and a car's got about a foot and a half from his bumper, riding behind the bicycle, 'cause can't go slower than 25 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. So hopefully, we can get this done sooner than later. So, and like I said, I appreciate that we're getting the speed limit dropped down to 15. These speed bumps are coming. But if there's anything we can do to get it done faster, but where, you're, who's it? Code and Compliance, they're on top of their job, because they're definitely sending us letters and pulling in our driveway, taking pictures of our mailbox that don't have two numbers on it every couple weeks, because the mailbox gets hit every couple months. So if I don't get to the numbers fast enough, they sit in there and mail us a compliance to take us to court for $400. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kristi Williams, then William Brenton?
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm sure you're familiar with my emails. Nice, this is my face attached to my frustrated emails. I want to say thank you for bearing with me. I'm a very passionate person, and when my passion has gone to a certain time of over four and a half years of asking and begging for resolve. Councilman Long, you mentioned the last time we were here, six months ago, that there's a process for everything, and we have done those things, which is why my frustration of these things that are not getting done, I'm at my wit's end. Emails, 311 calls, you're welcome to look at all of them. I have them all written down. Happy to send you an email with all those put there as well. After the petitions for the sidewalks, Mr. Bethany, you offered to come out and do the petitions. Rest assured, we got that taken care of on our own as a community. We brought multiple household people here from our street, and now they're saying that the process is now left in your hands, that essentially we have a month for, to go to Mr. Archer. We have another month to go sit and wait for somebody else, a week here, a week there. So now, all the petitions that are signed, we are now still waiting four months. Now, I'm sure you all are aware that we are putting in all this money for all of these piers and petitions, and we're doing all this stuff. It's great. I love it. It's gonna be beautiful. I love to see that's happening. But what's being lost is what the community is missing out, the sidewalks, the safety from getting from point A to point B, to enjoy the efforts that you guys are taking in, everyone else in the community is putting into it. We now have a burglary that just happened to my personal home after 50 years that we have been in that home. My grandfather built that house. We have never once had any issues on that road. We've had three break-ins in the last six months. We have had Division One side. They are sending drive-bys here and there, but those things start getting lost. We are asking that you please find some way to expedite the speed bumps. Boats are coming down, racing down. We can't stop it. Like, there's nothing we can do, and it's starting to make people stand out front and say, stop, like, slow down. It's 25, and it's gonna create a bigger issue. I'm just asking that we consider expediting that four-month process, because right now, it's in your hands. The sidewalks, as of two and a half years ago, we requested sidewalks prior to the speed bumps. We were 41 on the list for sidewalks, and again, we understand there is a process, and everyone has to take their time and take their turn. I've asked numerous times where we are on that list as of 2025. We have still not received a response. The covert that my husband spoke of, that was put in in 2003. I've had city engineering come down- I've had city engineering come down as of last summer to look at where the water was going around the covert, the valve we put in two years ago. And I have sent videos and photos, and still, as of last summer, numerous still more calls to 3-1-1, and the only things in the notes that they say now that it's up to the members of management and upper management, and they will get back to me. That is not happening. The only call that I've received after we had a phone call, Mr. Jones, was from the Codes and Compliance Assistant, and then the Director telling me that I needed to be quiet to listen to him, to let him finish. I'm sorry, but one number, or two numbers on my mailbox is a smaller issue in what's happening on our street right now, safety. And as I said, I was personally struck by a vehicle as a pedestrian walking down the street three years ago on summer. So I can definitely assure you that the stress and anxiety of not even being able to go down and enjoy the dock is level 100 for everyone that's down there. We can't even enjoy it. So please, I'm begging you, do something outside of, and you need me to do something, I will be on the streets. My neighbors, we will do what we need to do. But I'm asking, please, something sooner than five years, because I don't know how much longer I can take it, as I'm losing my mind. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams, we talked on the phone last week, and I just said, it's been elevated to our level, at least my level, about last week, so I'm gonna say, give us more time, but like, you have my number. You have my number.
Yes. I did call your office, and I spoke to Ms. Dorothea.
She's right there. Yep, yeah. So we've both talked to you.
And she ended the call on me when I asked for, when she told me that you, that you are not a strong mayor.
Yeah.
And I had to Google what that process meant.
I got you. So we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thanks. William Brenton?
Thank you all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
All right. Hello. My name is William Brenton, and I'm here with Virginia Organizing. Now, at the last public meeting, a question was asked of the council about the budgeting for homeless services and housing services, along with a feasibility stunt on the creation of a homeless shelter in this city. Now, the question of the budget was answered, and we do appreciate that, but the question of the study itself and when it will be released to the public was actually not answered. Now, the organization and I have spoken to both Mayor Jones and Councilman Long in private about this, and I do appreciate that as well. But I was hoping that officially, for the record and for everyone here, as well as for the rest of the council, that we could get an official statement on when that will be released, to the best of your knowledge at this time. I do appreciate you taking the time for me to speak here, and I just want to say this issue is very near and dear to my heart. Even this weekend on Easter, driving, you know, around the city, I saw people sleeping on the sidewalk, sleeping under awnings of public buildings. It's a real issue that this community is having in a lot of areas, and I just want to speak on how something needs to be done about the homeless issue in this city. Like, I know you said a lot of money is being spent on this, and I do appreciate the money being spent, but if it's not working, if we're still seeing this many people in some areas unhoused in cars, on sidewalks, something must change. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is, sorry, new business, city manager.
None, sir.
City attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City clerk.
Well, yes, just want to thank you guys for the recognition earlier for Municipal Clerk's Week. I appreciate that.
And we appreciate you. Councilman Harris.
And good evening to everyone, and thank you for everyone who came out on tonight and participated, whether you shared information with us or just being here on tonight. I do want to first thank those from the HRT and the commissioners and leadership for allowing me to take an Earth Day ride on our HRT system today. We started down here at the transit around the corner, and then we went up to Riverside to the transfer station and came back. We had an opportunity to just speak with some of our residents that utilize our public transit, and just get some information on how they feel about it, what can be better, and what we could look at to continue to do as they are utilizing that service, whether it's for employment purposes, getting back and forth to work, or just leisurely just utilizing our transportation. So I want to thank everybody who made that possible on today. And finally, I want to recognize a young man in our district, in the North District, by the name of Kingston Clark, Kingston Clark, affectionately known as KJ. KJ is an eighth grader at Ella Fitzgerald Middle School, and throughout his time, from sixth grade on up, he's been on the AB honor roll, and he's excited about the opportunities he's been accepted into the International Bachelorette Program at Warwick High School. So when he goes to high school, he'll be in the IB program, which is a very prestigious program. And he not only does well academically, athletically, he's a two-time AAU All-American in the 3,000 meters, and has goals to continue a track career in college. But not only that, he wants to major in sports broadcasting and marketing and work with kids. So anytime I have an opportunity to highlight one of our young people that I've had an opportunity to get some information from, I want to make sure it's on public record to know about the great young people that are doing amazing things here in our city. And I just wanted to highlight him, Mr. KJ, that you continue to do great things, stay on the right path, and I look forward to a bright future, hopefully one day seeing the Olympics and representing Newport News. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Long.
I want to also thank everyone for coming out tonight to express your concerns about different things in the city. I would ask if Kerry, if you could stay behind afterwards. I think there's some organizations have reached out to me about doing something similar to yours with collecting the plastic waste, so if you can just stay behind afterwards. From the Virginia Organizing, I spoke to the city manager after last council meeting, and he will be bringing something forward to us within the next few work sessions, but I'll reach out to Aaron Easter so that y'all can be aware of it, so you can see the work session, or attend the work session when it's presented to the city council. Also want to let everyone know, for Fair Housing Month, NAACP is having a conversation that's gonna be on housing, redevelopment housing is gonna be featured. It's gonna be at Down and Grove Center tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30. It's free and open to the public, so anyone who wants to come out to listen to that conversation, please do so. And that is it.
Councilman Coleman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone who came down today. It's good to see everyone. I just want to give a quick thank you to the manager and his team for all of the work that they have done on our budget so far, and also the capital improvement plan. I'm very impressed with what we've seen so far, and I know we're still working through the process, but thank you so much for all of your due diligence and also focusing all of our efforts. All the priorities of this council and this community are reflective in that budget and that CIP, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just one last thing, just want to wish the best of luck to Lily Roman and the Mitchville Archery Team. They will be going to Louisville the 1st of May to participate in the National Archery Championship. So we just, I know we are the, I will take the line from our vice mayor, the city of champions, and hopefully they're gonna bring back home the gold, but I want to wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Vick.
Yes, I definitely want to thank a longtime family friend, Anthony Fasella, for coming down. What an amazing presentation and very impactful, because I too am very concerned about not just the plastic, but trash in general in our communities. And I've said it for years, so I better do, I knew I had to move forward, and Mr. Kerry, Kerry Epps, you as well, to be able to really look at that our city just does not consist of buildings and infrastructure, but also making awareness of keeping our city clean. And I think that's so important, not just for plastic, but paper, and so I encourage you, I will take the survey. I was not able to take it today because of time getting myself ready for a city council meeting, but I thought it was a very interesting survey that you had, and that you should move forward with that. Also, as we're talking about your cleanup and the plastic concerns, and that was really good information that citizens need to know about some of the effects of plastic, and also the effects of having people not understanding the fact that putting plastic in water is very dangerous for our waterways and water life. But also, as we're talking about cleanup, I have to say this, Ms. Anna Grace, I don't know if she's here, and the East End neighborhood group, they're having a cleanup. We're included. We're having a cleanup this Saturday, and can you all help me with the time? I see Lamont nodding. I don't have the time, but we will be, I'm sorry, Michelle, my assistant is here, 9:00 a.m. Yeah, 9:00 a.m. We will be in the East End community on different streets, so if you're out, we really need volunteers, and we need to make our young people aware of the fact that they need to help start the process of keeping our communities clean, and how important that is. So we'll be there from, I think, 9:00 to 12:00, and we really encourage people to come out to join us. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody who came out today. Your voices were definitely heard, and definitely encouraging to hear citizens' concerns and see your point of view, and how we can all work together to make Newport News a better place. I also like to thank the City Parks Recreation, as well as Middletown Community Center. This last week, we had a Career Arts and Wellness Fair. We had over 1,000 people show up from over the Hampton Roads area, and we had 250 from Newport News Public Schools and 250 from Hampton Public Schools. And just to see the young children so engaged, it was very inspiring. We did the Career Fair last year, the children, they weren't that engaged in anything, but this year, they was really engaged. So special thanks to Virginia Peninsula Community College, as well as Newport News Shipyard. The shipyard had over 150 people come to their vending booth looking for employment, so that was really good. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I will spend my time right now recognizing someone who I asked to come down to our council meeting tonight, Ms. Rogers. Please, I want to speak proud of the names, and I don't want to mention names. Say it again, first name.
My name is Quishana.
Quishana. All right, thank you. I don't know if my colleagues on council, on Facebook, there was a post going around. I mean, I got tagged at least 50 times in this post in regards of a rendering of downtown reimagined, and it looked like the exact presentation that we have received from someone who we paid a good amount of money to do, but this young lady did a phenomenal job in doing so, and you can tell that she had a passion for her city and wanting to do something about it, and so you did a phenomenal job. Clearly, everyone was sharing it throughout the city. And so I just wanted to, one, acknowledge you for that, but also connect her to our amazing planning staff who do a phenomenal job. Flor, and Sheila. I'm sorry, Sheila. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just wave your hand real quick. If you both can wave your hand, I do want to connect you. I'm sorry, Sheila. I do want to connect you to them, because this is what they do, and they do a phenomenal job at it, so if you stay back, I will make that introduction. But thank you for continuing to not give up on your passions. We need it. I'm a huge advocate. We have so many talented individuals from this area, right? You do not need to move to do anything. You could do it right here if you so choose, and so I just, again, commend you for that. So that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be brief, just as a reminder to council, budget and CIP, that's all we're doing for the next three weeks. Let's get all the amendments in and go from there, but just thank you to staff for all the effort, Lisa and Alan, everyone, Gloria, for all the hard work with the budget. I think this is, the budget is the budget, but I think it's the input from the citizens that really make it something, and I think for the citizens, everyone who came out, just give us some more time to get our sort of processes, you know, correctly, but just love to hear more citizens involved in our budget. So with that, stand adjourned. Thank you.